In order to rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to a flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for which stands our nation under God and individual with liberty and justice as well.
Susie Rollcall.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeWor.
Here. Consent agenda motion for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Public comment.
Good evening, Craig Bonder, 82 North Washington Street. I'm here wearing my Follisburg Historical Society hat tonight, this weekend, Saturday, December 10th, 6:00 p.m. We'll have our annual Christmas party, and we're back at the schoolhouse. We've been not at the schoolhouse, we haven't had a Christmas party because of COVID, so everything's back in play. We've got the hawks and owls back as they usually are there, and good food to eat, and Santa might be bringing some really nice refreshments. So, anyone behind the deus here is on my guest list to come to the party.
Awesome. Thanks, Eric.
Hi.
Thank you. Move down to.
Are you running a fever, Mr. Beecham?
How was that coffee, councilman? What I wanted to say is all set there, we're good.
Old business, number eight is the line share. We've waited the twenty days, over twenty days with the resolution sitting. Somebody would like to make motion for resolution thirty-four twenty-two to approve the sale to the Estes group?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing non-vocal.
I do have one thing, if this does pass, can you give Jessica an iso directions to what you'd like to see in the development agreement?
Yeah.
If I could just add another caveat here, so if you are adopting a resolution, this is contingent upon the negotiation of a purchase and development agreement and several other things within the resolution, so it's not like the deed gets handed over tomorrow, just to make that clear.
All right, anything else? Sue.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
No.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Forward now with the IT services agreement.
As you were aware, we were informed in September that Agoro Technology will be going out of business, and as of January first, will no longer be providing IT services in City of Lowell. They handle our data and front-end needs for many years. In the spring, the city of Lowell and Power retained IP Consulting to maintain our network services and upgrades. Being their familiarity with the city as a professional service, Charlie West, general manager of Lowell and Power, and I met with IP Consulting to look into them providing our front-end needs as well. They provided a proposal for the infrastructure needs and desktop needs. They also added addressed security features such as notification, two-factor authentication, and endpoint protection, which is antivirus. Finally, they quoted us for security incident event management. While they provided a total monthly price for each of these, there will be a fifty-fifty split with Lowell and Power, for example, the infrastructure, while the remaining prices will be separated either by total computers between the city and Lowell and Power, or the number of users between our staff and total endpoints for each facility. As it relates to the cost of services, Charlie and I have conducted a detailed cost-sharing analysis of the IP, of the totality of the IP consulting agreements. The cost-sharing was determined based on the prorata utilization of the various components and services contained in the agreements. The result of the analysis is the mutually agreed upon split of sixty percent City of Lowell, forty percent Lowell and Power, and here's a breakdown for the cost-sharing. For the original agreement with IP Consulting, the city's share of that is twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and ten cents per year. Lowell and Power's would be seventeen thousand eight hundred and four dollars, seventy-four cents, totaling forty-four thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-four cents per year. The additional services which we're looking at tonight, the city of Lowell's costs are thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents per year, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight thousand and eighty cents per year will be Lowell and Power's costs, totaling fifty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars for the year. Total between all of these is sixty-one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents per year from the city, and forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-four cents for Lowell and Power, totaling over a hundred and eleven, I'm sorry, a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, thirty-four cents per year. The following is a breakdown of the additional services that are contained in the proposal from IP Consulting. Infrastructure, this includes the management of individual servers and rounds out the remaining portion of network management that was not contained in the original IP consulting agreement. This includes our managed services for Windows, Linux, and Linux. Monthly cost is nineteen hundred and sixty dollars per month, and will be split evenly between the city and Lowell and Power. Desktop services, this is the help, desk, and support for the front-end IT issues staff and council may have. Monthly amount is one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, the city will pay nine hundred dollars for this, Lowell and Power will pay two hundred and fifty dollars. Two-factor authentication, this is where employees have access to their account via their password and alerts sent via cellphone. Monthly cost is a hundred and eleven dollars, the city will pay eighty-one dollars for this, Lowell and Power will pay thirty dollars. Endpoint protection, this is where malicious behavior is detected in our network and the steps to remediate it. Monthly cost is six hundred and forty dollars, the city will pay three hundred and ninety dollars for this, Lowell and Power will pay two hundred and fifty dollars for this. Our current endpoint protection was purchased through our previous IT vendors and will need to be replaced. The option presented by IP Consulting provides additional benefits and enhancements over our current endpoint protection. Security incident and event management, this is all aspects of incident support for any attack to the network. This is a recommended enhancement of our services we have and currently aligns with industry best practices and standards. Monthly cost is nine hundred and twenty dollars, the city will pay seven hundred and twenty of this, Lowell and Power will pay two hundred of this. Security sensor for the S I E M, this is a one-time purchase to assist with the S I C M. This is a recommended enhancement of our services and we currently have in alliance with industry best practices and standards. The total cost for this is one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, forty-two cents, and will be split evenly between the city and Lowell and Power. The total cost is sixty-eight thousand dollars to replace all services previously provided by Agoro, along with some work from Core Hicon. In the past, we spent for these services fifty-three thousand dollars. The increase is due to market rate discount with previous vendors and enhanced services. We were paying eighty-five dollars an hour per hour with Agoro, but as I said, we were receiving approximately twelve thousand dollars a year in enhancements that align with best practices and industry standards which we did not have prior. This allows for IP Consulting to handle all our needs rather than piecemealing them. The remaining expenses are associated with products and licenses. These expenses are not unique to IP Consulting and will remain in some fashion and amount regardless of what IT vendor we utilize or if we hire an IT person. Charlie and I believe this is better than hiring an IT person because there are too many complexities to IT with no one person can interrupt. With IP Consulting, we have a team of experts to help us at a moment notice. This proposal will expire when the network service management service agreement does. The city council approved that agreement along with Lowell and Power. It was a five-year agreement beginning last spring. I'm recommending the little city council approve the proposal that's presented for IP Consulting for IT management services. Jeff Winker is here for IP, and I'm sure Charlie can answer your questions as well.
Questions? Go ahead.
This looks really good, I read it pretty good, I've seen a lot about these types of contracts before on that part of it. I want to know if I have issues with my personal pad here. Who's our contact person here? And then it sounds like we're going to get some upgrades done to these, and do we bring them in and drop them off, and then pick them up?
Your contact will be me.
Okay.
And then I will put a service ticket in. The remainder, our employees, what they'll be able to do is if they have issues with their computers, they're going to be able to go put a service ticket in, basically, and deal with it directly. It may be different, we should just call Betsy or Tony. So it'll be a little different, but.
Do we do our own updates, or is that getting come to you before we go ahead and do any update that any apps do, anything that would need?
I always let them handle it, I don't do them. Except for like Apple updates, I do those.
Okay.
Yeah, software.
Yeah, software, Apple updates.
They're secure enough for the way Betsy explained it to me when we got them.
And you said two authentic is for?
Two-factor.
It won't be for you, it will not be for you, it'll be for city employees, it'll be for our network internal.
Well, I may have missed, but how long is the counter?
For this one, it'll be about four years and three months.
Okay. I know we currently don't have anything written, I would hate to see at the end of that four-year, there be a different council and not want to continue on with Lowell and Power. Is there a way we can come up with a, where we agree that it'll always be working together instead of individually?
Well, our network is kind of, the way we've set our networks up, they're kind of meshed together in a lot of different ways, so it'd be very difficult for us to just go on our own.
But it can't be done, right?
You're going to spend a lot of money.
But that's, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Mike or Charlie? Motion to approve the IP consulting management service contract?
So moved.
I'll support. Discussion? Hearing non-vocal, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Dan, Grindel and Shepherd have been here.
May be mayor and council, Merry Christmas. For the 2003 construction season, Grindel Drive is on our street improvement list for resurfacing. In order to obtain bids for the work, we need to get a design engineering completed. Back in 2005, about half the length of Grindel Drive was reconstructed, it was a section from Jackson Street to Division, and then another section from James Street to the driveway at 751, 753 Grindel. The remaining portions, those between Division and James, then the rest of the way to the city limits, were not touched. Is the intent of this project to reconstruct or resurface the entire length of Grindel from Jackson to Fun Street? Proposed construction to take place in the areas that were previously reconstructed and just had the surface existing asphalt milled and the street resurfaced. If you go up there and drive it, seventeen-year-old street surface is showing signs of distress in many areas. The sections that were not resurfaced in 2005 would have the entire existing asphalt and gravel base removed and the street reconstructed. Kermit Gutter would also be installed between Division and James, and then the drainage issues in those areas would also be addressed. As of today, the preliminary construction estimates for the construction work on Grindel is about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Once the design's done, that could change. In the same area, Shepherd Drive is in need of reconstruction. I hope the government, if you drove up there, that we need some work up to there. While at this time, we're unsure how much funding the city will be receiving from the state for the adult-use marijuana sales. In the past, these funds have been utilized for street resurfacing in Lowell. If sufficient funding is available, I'd like to include Shepherd Drive in the resurfacing work. But in order to do that, we need to be prepared by getting the design work done for that street as well. Construction on Shepherd, if we can get her done this coming year, we can include the removal of all the street surface and gravel base to reconstruct the entire street, and because of the grade of the existing street and the grades onto private property, we need to address the drainage along the entire length of that roadway and improve upon it. At this moment, construction estimates on Shepherd is about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. Once the design portion is completed from both streets, we look at going out for bids only for Grindel Drive. If funding appears to be available, that we could do Shepherd, we will, but as of right now, it's Grindel's for next year. Williams Works has provided a scope of services for the design engineering work, and to provide adequate design, you need to get some survey and soil borings done soon, and then they can spend the winter designing so we can be ready to go out for bid in the spring with construction to take place after July 1st out of next year's, next fiscal year's budget. Williams Works provided a proposed fee for the work of forty-one thousand dollars, which is twenty-four thousand five hundred for Grindel, sixteen thousand five hundred for Shepherd. Brandon Mears from, my name seems to be sitting here, told just now, is here tonight from Williams Works, he's our contact person there. If you have any questions, he can help answer them, but it's my recommendation that we move forward with the design engineering as quoted.
We'll know where we stand probably sometime February or March as to how much we receive in revenue from the marijuana access tax. As you know, last year we got about two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. We budgeted, we projected in our budget about two hundred thousand to be conservative, and I'm guesstimating it's going to be more than the two hundred. I, and I probably will even, we have, we'll have more facilities to come for, we'll have seven facilities this year, last year we had five. So that will, I anticipate it to be more, and as you know, we take that access, we put it off street, so.
Well, if we can find a way to get Shepherd down next year.
Yeah, I'm going to find a way, yeah.
My thinking is if we spend sixteen thousand five hundred, is that good for a couple years, your design work?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Redo it again?
No.
Once it's designed, and it's on the shepherd, you go and funds do come to build, we don't have to worry about it then.
Right.
And I don't want to spend any money now to be ready, we can go.
If we don't get enough pop money, you could.
Start shopping.
If you could do your magic and make that so we could fix it.
I think, I think we'll be able to figure it out.
Motion to approve the design engineering quote from Williams Works.
I will make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other questions for Dan?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. So, Mike has been doing a good job the last couple, few meetings, moving stuff up so that if not necessary, we don't have to meet on the nineteenth, maybe it's the week before Christmas, I'm sure there's plenty of stuff going on. So, unless anybody has anything to add to the agenda, I'd like to move that we cancel the December nineteenth city council meeting.
And what we'll do, like we do in years past with bills, we'll just pay them and then we'll report it.
Yep.
Is December nineteenth Canadian at Christmas?
No. When you're Canadian, every day is Christmas. But I'll bring you a goose if you want, anyway. Leave right in the store.
You looking for a motion?
I made the motion.
No, support that.
All right, thanks. Anything else for discussion, I was, Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yeah.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right, following along with that, we should all have the 2023, it's normally what we do the last meeting of the year, but since this is the last meeting of the year, we put together a list for all the 2023 meetings, including the four Tuesdays, who will be offset by holidays. So if there are no objections, I'll move that we approve the 2023 meeting calendar.
Sure, I'll support.
Thank you. Changes, discussion, questions?
I don't know about July 3rd, I'm not all the way around, but it'll be a long weekend.
Yeah.
So, yes, the crazy, the crazy thing is the city's open on the third, and closed on the fourth. Yeah, I know, I don't.
Hopefully we have a forum, and we'll go with the date, and if it doesn't, we don't have it.
Yeah. Or we'll move stuff back to June nineteenth and do what we're doing tonight.
Exactly. Sounds good.
Any other discussion on the calendar? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeWor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Boarding Commission, your board, Selena.
Nothing.
Marty.
We met with the water authority today, the township and us, still having our discussions and moving forward, and next month, we're hoping, I'd like to have something to present to us, to the board, and keep that process moving. It was a good meeting, so I want to keep it going forward, and I did ask that, if once we're doing this, that once a month, it just pops up in old business just so we can keep it fresh in everybody's, you know, forefront, because we have to work with our neighbor. That's it.
Okay, we're meeting with Vision tomorrow at four at the chamber, and Fire Authority, if needed, will be on Thursday, I haven't got a cancellation notice yet, so I don't know. Jim?
Wednesday we'll be meeting with DPW Fund. This year, it looks like we have just a little, under a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to give out to the community, so we'll be looking forward to that meeting, and then we'll have Lowell and Power next week.
On that, are you, is your, the approval of the IT stuff on your agenda?
Yes. Round out.
Yeah, next week, sorry, then maybe I'll, okay, sorry, question?
Nothing.
Okay. Mike, City Management, your board.
Couple things, just want to thank DPW, police, fire, Lowell and Power for assisting with the parade on Saturday, it was a really nice event, we had a lot of people here. It was a long parade. I've never, I've never walked, been in the parade and walked back to my spot and had the parade still go on, so I was kind of shocked by that, so that was a really good event. Update on Monroe, we should be getting the title searches this week. It was a very lengthy process. With that information, there's a couple things the engineers need to do with that information, but we should very shortly, I hope, be able to go out for bid on Monroe, hopefully, maybe right into this month, we'll see. But I'm trying to get Monroe going so we can get it going in the spring. Nine-Nine North Washington, the tenants have left the residence, the home has been padlocked, we will have exterminators coming out, like putting traps out tomorrow, and there's still some garbage out there and some other debris, so we're still dealing with that. We're working on some modifications to the cost recovery ordinance that we're going to be bringing to council probably in January, and then, as Marty said, the Water Advisory Committee met today, and that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mike? All right, appointments are back up because of the law being expired in New Year's Day. Jim, you got building authorities?
I've got.
Still got them. Craig, are you still here? Order review?
Coming up, yeah.
Staying on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Marty, order of deals? Okay, you're on it, what about Lori? Yeah, Lori's staying?
Yeah, we'll just vote her in right now.
Deal. All right, I was going to ask Sue about the Look Memorial Fund. That spot has to be from the congressional churches, is there where you can reach out to them and maybe have them nominate someone here for the end of the year? All right, thank you. I think that's it for people that are here, but I'll start reaching out, try to do them all early in the year so we can pull it off the docket again, like it seemed to work out well last year.
Yeah, once reclaimed without those.
Now, these names don't mean that these people are all resigning, right?
No, it's an automatic renewal, yep.
Got it.
All right, Councilwoman, it's Cliff.
The parade was fun, it was neat to see everybody out, glad it wasn't raining.
Jim?
Couple things, I want to say the parade worked good, a lot of people, it was pretty deep, five, six deep on that part of it. Saturday at the Coffee with Council, we always have a nice little turnout, and one of the things that I don't want it to go to the wayside is unfortunately the old parking lot behind the Moose Lodge about the contaminants center on the soil, and it was brought up by some residents of not letting it go to bed without having some conversation, whether it's fencing, looking at, is it cost-effective to remove it, would it cause more damage if we tried to remove the soil and all those good things, so I think there is a concern for some residents that are to our attention, so I don't want it to go to the back burner, but we need to do something, I don't know what that is, we'll talk more after the first of the year and keep that on the docket, probably.
How about when I get the due care report, I'll bring it back?
That would be awesome, yep, it'd be great, so. On that, I hope everybody has a great holiday.
Speaking of the soil, there's, and I don't know if you addressed the email in particular, but there's a lot of people talking about the nine-nine North Washington possibly being contaminated, so I thought I'd put it on the record that in 2007, the DEQ looked at it twice, got a clean bill of health.
2006 and 2007.
Okay. So, six and seven, it's clean.
There may still be some due care that still needs to be done. I did follow up with our environmental attorney on that, but you could, we'll talk about it later date, but you could put that on the onus of, whatever you do to the property, it could be addressed then.
Okay.
Thanks.
Go, Jim?
Yeah.
All right.
So I got a couple things. We're going to be working on cost recovery. I'd like to see us get the parking lot resolved because we have no teat to do anything in our parking lots, we have no ordinance, we have nothing, so work on getting the residents that live in there, maybe getting them a sticker they can put in their windows so we'll have a designated spot for them, I'd like to see that.
To clarify what the issue is, is we have, we have some vehicles that stay overnight in the parking lots, and in some parking lots, there's actually signage that designates where the overnight parking is. We were having an issue with some of those cars, and come to find out, we have no ordinance to enforce that. So, it could be something is just as similar as to what we do for on-street parking in the winter months, where we don't allow, unless we have a permit. We could do something along those lines is what we're, we could do. Also, I know, the other issue obviously is to consider whether or not we want to allow on-street parking on Main Street downtown, I know that's another issue.
Yeah, I'd like to see us overnight, go ahead and do Dave, but overnight, get them off, that way Kent County, when they come through and our trucks come through, they got a clean shot. This year, when we got to two and a half feet of snow, there was a vehicle across from me, and it went around it, and, you know, business owners were shoveling out, and then when the car finally moved, Kent County came through, and a great big wad ended up where they had just finished, so I just, that way Main Street gets cleaned up at night, it's either the way, it's safe, we don't have to worry about it. That's what I'd like to see.
All right, you said a couple of things on that.
Yeah, and the parade, the parade was great. I want to thank Fire Chief Shannon, he had his captains, right, bring their personal vehicles in to shut down side streets so that the parade could be saved. These guys are doing this on their own time, and that's, the lights on them vehicles, I found out, they pay for all of that out of pocket. Elto actually has a budget to give their people, and we, you know, they don't, so maybe that's something you guys can maybe look at over there. And the DPW guys, the trucks look good, Dan? Big loder sitting down there, there was nobody getting around that, so it was good. And I gave our chief some necklaces to wear, but I don't think he.
They didn't get dressed though. They don't know, so.
Okay. But all in all, it was a good time. I want to thank you guys for writing. I want to thank you guys for riding in the truck. It was, it was fun. It's amazing how many people showed up in that cold and watched it, and the little kids' smiles were amazing, so thank you, guys, and we'll do it again next year.
Peanish.
Well, I don't want to be protective, but parade was wonderful. Admittedly, it was my first Lowell parade, Santa Parade, so that was an experience for me. It just kind of hits home and kind of sends like shivers down my spine of why I love Lowell. I love living here, I love serving the community, and that is a great example of why. Other than that, happy holidays. I hope everybody has safe, happy, healthy holidays with your loved ones.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I say something?
Sure.
I know, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but this past week and weekend, we have taken a lot of complaints of people getting scammed. We have collected around a thousand, I think it's around $1,000 of fake $100 bills are being passed off at the smaller businesses where they'll come in and buy something for 20 bucks, pass up 100, next thing you know, they're holding on to a worthless bill. So watch, watch that. Also, please, everyone lock up their stuff. We've had, we had a rash of car larcenies over the weekend, but they stole a vehicle where the person, I'm, I'm pretty sure they left their purse, keys, and credit cards in their, in their vehicle. The vehicle was stolen, within hours, the credit cards were being used by gift cards at Grand Rapids. Detective Lawrence has been working with the Secret Service on the fake money and been passing out these, I don't know what you call them, it's like a bill identifier type of a thing, you can put the bill in, it shows where all the watermark's supposed to be. And Detective Culver was, was gone all day today, running around Grand Rapids, getting video from different stores where these cards were used. People aren't locking their things up, even if they are locking their things up, they're still breaking into the cars, so if you have anything valuable, don't leave it in your car, if you do, put it in the trunk, it's out of sight. It's that time of year that people, stuff's going on, so.
Yeah, we worry about counterfeit bills all the time at my store, so all my employees are told, and they're cheap, is to buy the pens, and you mark them, and if it's a fake bill, it'll have a big black streak on it. If it's a good bill, the ink just disappears and you're good to go. We make it so, and I think a lot of businesses need to start doing it. If, if they don't do it, then they're responsible, you know, on them, because we gave them the tools to do it, so if any business needs some of them, I have probably a half a dozen of those pens. I'd be more than happy to give it to them, show them how they work.
Jeff?
Yeah.
I have nothing. I apologize for missing the parade, and I hope everybody has a fantastic holiday.
Well, that's one of the reasons it was so successful.
Now I have something. Gloves off.
Well, that'll make the motion, that's 7:34.
I'll support. Motion in the second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Return.
Hold on, are you cut?